This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Welcome to our candidate forum this evening. We appreciate your attendance tonight to learn more about the candidates and their positions on various issues that affect our community. My name is Gary Johnson, editor of the Leader Telegram. It's our practice with these forums to rotate the moderator's role among the event sponsors, and for this event, it's my turn. This event is sponsored by the Leader Telegram, WQOW News 18, Valley Media Works, Wisconsin Public Radio, Eau Claire Area Chamber of Commerce. We also appreciate Chippewa Valley Technical College for providing the venue for tonight's forum. Our format tonight is to begin with question and answer session with the candidates. After a short break, the candidates will move to the tables to the right and the left of the stage. There you will take advantage of a more informal opportunity to meet them and ask your own questions. Now to begin the candidate forum. On April 2, voters in the city of Eau Claire will determine who will fill the remaining year of the three-year term of the city council president, which has been vacant since last spring. You'll meet the candidates in a moment. Also coming up on April 2, city of Eau Claire voters will elect five people to three-year terms as at-large city council members, and voters in the Eau Claire area school district will elect three members to the school board. Tonight's sponsors have also planned forums for the Eau Claire school board on March 14 and the Eau Claire at-large city council seats on March 21. For tonight's city council president forum, our two candidates are Terry Weld, currently an at-large city council member, and Andrew Worthman, the current acting president and a city council member representing District 5. The following are the guidelines for the forum. The questions that will be asked were available to the candidates one hour prior to the start of the forum. Each candidate will have an opportunity to deliver a two-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. There will be six questions, and each candidate will have two minutes to answer. Timekeeper will give a 90-second, one-minute, 30-second, and a stop signal to the candidates. Because of time limitations, there won't be an opportunity for questions from the audience. However, plan to stay for the meet and greet where there will be time to talk individually with candidates. The first candidate to answer each question will be rotated. A moment ago, we flipped a coin to determine who will go first with an opening statement. The first candidate to deliver an opening statement is Andrew Worthman.
Thank you, Gary, and thank you to all of our sponsors this evening. I just want to welcome everyone this evening and thank you for being here with us at the Chippewa Valley Technical College. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Andrew Worthman. I currently serve as the acting president of the Eau Claire City Council. Just a little background, I grew up on an organic dairy farm in Osceola, Wisconsin, and came to college here in 2001. My day job, I currently work for the Pew Charitable Trust, helping to support our national parks and communities that have been devastated by flooding. My wife Carrie and I own a home on the East Hill. Our city has accomplished so much over the past decade. We've added 3,000 new jobs in our community. We've gotten hundreds of millions of new dollars of investment, and it's really because of our city council's leadership and the role of public and private partnerships that we've helped to lead that transformation. At the same time, wages are not keeping pace in our community. Our biggest community issue isn't partisanship. It's the fact that tonight, we will have people sleeping on our streets. We have 300 kids in our schools who are classified as homeless. We have a housing shortage that we have to focus on and do something about. That's why you've seen our city council already start to act rapidly on the issue of affordable housing. It's why we're investing $700,000 into removing lead pipes from some of our older neighborhoods. And I'm proud to say that in this year's city budget, we've actually added positions at our library, as requested by our library director and after many respectful weeks of debate. In fact, one position is specifically to help those who are experiencing homelessness. The other is to help with at-risk literacy for youth who may not have a chance to succeed. In fact, earlier today, Governor Evers came to our city to make sure that he learned more about and highlighted the program that we've put in place, because it has an opportunity to help people in other communities across our state. I'm proud of the way that our council has stepped up to the plate to figure out how we can solve the most pressing challenges of our time. I'm running for city council president this April because it will depend on bold actions like these and creative, dynamic leadership from all of us in this room to make sure that we build an Eau Claire that lifts everyone up. Thank you.
Terry Weld.
Thank you, Gary. And thank you all for being out on a cold winter night. I appreciate your time with us and spending this next hour together. My name is Terry Weld, and I'm running for city council president. For over 45 years, this city has been home to me. It's where I grew up, on the north side of Eau Claire, where I learned to drive, where I experienced my first job, where I graduated from high school and earned a college degree, where I lived a lifelong dream of owning a restaurant, and then realized the greatest gift of all in becoming a father, where I became part of something very special, Children's Museum of Eau Claire, where seeing, touching, learning, and growing has brought so many smiles to our great city, where I built a new career in real estate, and where I learned and now live a new passion in city governing. It's where I share a home and a garden with my wife, and where I'll retire someday. I'm running for city council president because I love this city and the life it has given me. I'm running because I want to earn back the trust and the confidence in our city council. I'm running because I believe in leading by example and simple common sense. I believe in asking citizens what they think before saying what I want. I believe in supporting those that we have entrusted and appreciating every dollar earned and maximizing every dollar spent. And I believe in nonpartisan local governance. Lastly, I believe in working together to help every citizen we can find a home, start a business, earn more money, ride a bike, take a walk, or use the bus, to enjoy a public park, or serve on a public committee, to be responsible, to feel safe in their neighborhood, and to live well together. That is why I'm running for city council president.
Next first question. What do you view as the role of the council president, and what does your leadership style make, why does your leadership style make you a good candidate? Terry Weld.
And this has been a big part of my statement since this campaign started, and I guess I'll lead off with that. I truly believe, again, that our city council members and our city council president should be nonpartisan. I believe that that role should never steer a council but should lead it. And I think that in order to be a good leader in today's world, it's important that we're encouraging the idea of free thinking and independent thinking, always keeping in mind that balance that I think has always worked and been successful in our community and on our city council. I think it's important that when the president is taking on this role and building a council that is going to be productive and healthy for our community, I think it's important that they all are independent and all don't think the same and all don't vote the same. I don't think that's healthy for Eau Claire, and I don't think it's healthy for any of us moving forward.
Andrew Worthman.
Thank you. And first off, as the longest-serving member of the current city council, and also as someone who's had the opportunity to lead the council so far as the acting city council president since the resignation of former President Kincaid, I think I've shown through the initiatives we've already worked on in the past that I am open to making sure that we have a council that is transparent, that is welcoming to all ideas, that is engaging the citizens in our community. For the first time ever, we have created a public listening portion in our city council meeting so that any member can come down to city council and share their ideas, whether or not it's on the agenda, something listed on the Monday or Tuesday agenda. We also have held our first-ever public listening session on affordable housing. We had over 100 folks come down from all walks of life to discuss how they see us taking action on that important issue. I've also worked with members, every single city council member, on the idea that they would like to bring forward, whether or not I agree with that idea. And we've had a number of council members who have proposed things that I've said, "I may not agree with you, but I will make sure that it will get on the agenda and that we will have a respectful and open debate about that idea in an up or down vote." I'd also like to point out that we have had three new neighborhood associations start in the past year. That, again, is a reflection of our city council and our city council members who are taking active roles in their neighborhoods to engage folks. So we've already had three start, and we're already seeing two more that are getting organized. And again, I like to think that we're seeing more participation in our government and our local democracy because we have a council that's leading on those issues.
Next question. One of the challenges of an expanding local employment base and workforce is an adequate and affordable supply of housing for renters and first-time buyers, and city officials are participating in a housing task force seeking to address this issue. What is the city council's role in ensuring a sufficient supply of acceptable quality of housing? Andrew Worthman.
Thank you. And I think, you know, looking at this question, it really gets to the fundamental role of local government in helping to solve the problems in our community. When I was first elected, we were told many times by folks that it's not the purview of our city council to even focus on poverty and to try to figure out this issue. And that's something I fundamentally disagree on. I do believe it's our role, and I do believe that we can make a real change. And on the issue of affordable housing, because we have become a destination community, we have folks moving back, we're expanding, that has also led to growing challenges for us. And the fact remains that, you know, we have 46% of our community that are living just paycheck to paycheck and one bad day away from not being able to make the rent. And so affordable housing has risen to, I believe, our number-one issue right now, figuring out how everyone can put a roof over the head. And the fact remains that without that, people may not have an opportunity to get a job, they may not have an opportunity to get further education. And so I think we need to look at our zoning, we need to look at our setbacks, we need to look at our fees. And I've actually said that I'm fully in support of an advisory commission on affordable housing jointly with Altoona that would help us set the course for affordable housing into the future.
Terry Weld.
The task force that was just mentioned has just completed their study, and a lot of people spent a lot of time and energy and effort on that, on that report. And with that report came a list and detailed plan of how we can attack this as a community and as a city. And, you know, I really was amazed and really supported that report and the detail and the thought that went into it. And it really does lay out, you know, a three-phase plan over the next two years to help us address this problem. And it'll get started, and it's something that we will include as part of our legislation to make sure that we are conscious of and are continuing to work on it throughout the next two years. I've had a lot of experience in the housing industry, and I've gotten to see and work with a lot of different buyers of all income levels. And I've had the pleasure and joy of sitting down with a first-time home buyer that had no way of owning or ever being able to borrow the money to purchase a home, but helping her through the programs that are offered to our buyers now through our own housing authority here in Eau Claire that provides income opportunities and financing opportunities for our buyers, for finding down payment grants to help them get into their homes. But in the end, it's going to come down to our community working together, trying to not only create more housing but also increase our wages and address the income that we seem to be short on right now, which denies people and keeps them from having the income to support the housings that they need. And my job and our job and the council and the city of Eau Claire is to encourage that economic development and try and find a way to bring in more affordable or higher wages and jobs.
2015, the city changes wintertime parking rules for a system where alternate side parking was in effect every day for several months to a new system where those parking rules are in effect only during a declared snow event. What is your current view on whether this was a positive change? Terry Weld.
So, you know, a couple of things there. We've had a long five weeks, obviously, historical snowfalls, and we've also, at the same time, probably had our first real experience with the change in the alternate side parking ordinance that was created a few years ago. And so, you know, a couple of thoughts on that. I think, first of all, there's a learning curve there. For many years, people were in the habit and in a routine where they knew from November to April, they had to move their vehicle every other day. Since now, the new change, that only becomes required if there's been a snow emergency declared. And so now, it's difficult for people to get in that habit and to make sure they pay attention. And so what's happened is we've created some congestion in our streets because of parking on both sides, because of the snow and how high it's getting and filling up those areas. And so what's happened is we're not able to, unfortunately, to enforce those parking concerns. Not that we're looking to create burden on those that are covered in snow and snowplowed in, but it's important that people understand that we did have money set aside to help with the parking enforcement in our community. We had $25,000 that was removed from our budget by the acting president and council to put towards another initiative. And unfortunately now, we don't have the means, the manpower, or the money to help enforce the parking concern, to make our streets safer, allow our emergency vehicles to get through, allow our snowplows to get through. And now we're in a situation where it's dangerous and it's not safe on our streets.
Andrew Worthman.
Thank you. I'm proud of the changes that we made on the alternate side parking, because really what this came down to in 2015, as it is today, is a matter of fairness and fees. And we were seeing over and over that people were being charged who could least afford it in our community. We were seeing, you know, people in April, when it's 60 degrees out, forgetting one time to change their car to the other side of the street and getting fined for it. And we got calls over and over saying, "This is not okay." And in reality, this was a tax on being poor, and I'll tell you why. It's because people who don't have garages and have to park on the street, and you'll see it in a lot of our older neighborhoods downtown, were the ones who are getting hit with almost all of the fines. They were the ones getting hit with it. So we're getting calls saying, "This is not okay." And that's why we changed this alternate side parking, because it didn't make sense. We were fining people unreasonably. So we made this change, and I have to say that, obviously, this last year, we've seen a record snowfall. And let's all hope that we don't continue to see year after year of record snowfall. But the fact is that I believe our plow drivers and our city staff have actually done a really great job of making sure that the streets are plowed and that people are able to safely get to school and get to work. But I will say at the same time that if folks have ideas about how to improve our current law, we're open to that, and our city council should be open to that. But I think at the base of it, again, we were seeing tens of thousands of dollars in unnecessary fines that were getting handed out to people who, getting a $30 fine in their mailbox could be the difference between whether they're able to go to the store that week or not. That's, for some people, that is what it was about.
Recent city budgeting process included several amendments changing the budget during final deliberations, including a new citizen-based budgeting process. What are your thoughts on the appropriate process for developing and adopting the city budget? Andrew Worthman.
So, and thank you for this question. It is by state law and has always been and is currently the city manager's and city staff's authority to present us with a balanced budget at city council. And then, in what I think of as the 11th hour, we're asked to make amendments to the budget that align with our priorities. And so oftentimes, that's in November. Each year, we try to go a little further and give ourselves a little more time to work on these. In past years, sometimes we would have hundreds of thousands of dollars of amendments all in the last five days. Sometimes it was even shorter than that. This year, we actually went to almost a month between when the first budget amendments were proposed and the changes that we ended up making. I'm proud that our city council took action to create these two new library positions. Again, one to focus on the needs for folks who are experiencing homelessness as they come into the library, and the other focused on making sure that children who are most at risk have an opportunity to be able to learn to read. We've also, and this was something that I'm also proud of, is we did take some money from our enforcement of parking downtown, and we said, "We want to invest it in our neighborhood associations." And participatory budgeting is something that has seen success in other communities where you set aside a portion of your budget that people get to vote on directly how they want to see it spent. It's something that across the aisle, Republicans and Democrats have all said, "This has improved participation and really brought out folks to meet their neighbors and think about how to solve problems." So we passed the first step of that, $25,000, and I'm incredibly proud of that. In fact, our former city manager, Mike Huggins, has commented so many times about how this is something that would engage folks additionally on the budget, which is something we're always looking for. So, you know, the budget is something that I think is a work in progress, but ultimately, we as city council have to vote on it, and we're accountable to the people who elected us. And so it has to reflect those values.
Very well.
Thank you. It can be simpler and it can be smoother, you know, than what we just witnessed this last year. We start and we get a first look at the budget starting in August, and every week or every other week when we meet, it's an ongoing discussion and ongoing reminder about the system and how we go about amending our city budget. And with that is the reminder that if you have an amendment or if you have a change to our budget, that you get it in early. And with that, be specific as to what is the budget for, or what is the change for in our budget? Where is it going? And then where is that money coming from? And specifically, where is that money coming from? What we saw in the 11th hour, as was mentioned, was not necessary. It didn't have to be that way. And this was an item that was brought before us at the very end, and with very little notice for us to even see it, with no public discussion in regards to the two positions that were being created or in regards to the amendment to our budget and taking that money away. It was, it was, it became the, I guess, the thorn in our side and in our council and how that whole thing went down. And unfortunately, the end result was we, you know, we were forced to make decisions that required us to make cutbacks in other parts of our budget. And to do that meant sacrificing money for contractual services, for porta-potties, for our fuel, all the things that we rely on and depend on and plan on as a budget were now gone. And to keep up with that and to make adjustments to it required us to budget on what money might be there and what should be there and never knowing and for sure having it there.
For the first time ever, the candidates were invited to each submit a question that would be answered by both candidates. In this case, we will ask the candidate who submitted the question to answer first, followed by his opponent. This question was submitted by Andrew Worthman. We will ask Andrew to respond first. What are three policies you helped author during your time on city council that you are most proud of?
Thank you. And I want to first start with something that we did early on in my council tenure. It was at the time when same-sex couples could not get married, it was illegal to get married. And we actually worked with our city staff and our entire city council, I believe it was a unanimous vote, if not close to it, to make sure that every city worker, even if they were in a same-sex couple, had the opportunity to get the same benefits as everyone else. And I remember getting a call from the university professor of mine the next day, and he said, "You know, when you guys pass this, I know it will impact only city employees, but you sent a message about, you know, that we feel welcomed and that we feel we have a place at the table." And this was, you know, to hear that and to do something that could help expand our opportunities and our fairness to all of our employees, I think, was something I'm absolutely proud of. Another thing that I want to point out is we recently passed our reduction in fines for marijuana. And we listened to the voters in November, who by 88% in our city said they do not agree with the current law, that we're locking too many folks up, that just for minor marijuana possession, people are not able to get housing, a loan, get training for a job. Absurd. And so we listened to that and said, "How do we deprioritize that?" Because we've got a lot of issues. How do we deprioritize that issue? And we passed an ordinance to say, "We're only going to have $1 fine for marijuana." Lastly, the thing that I'm probably most proud of is our sustainability commission. And I worked with council member Dave Duhax to help create that commission in 2013, and that helped lead to our current goals, because working with all of the folks who serve on that commission, they've helped us set forth a goal of 100% clean energy for our entire community by the year 2050. It's a big deal, and it's something I'm incredibly proud of.
Very well.
You know, the advantage of asking questions of each other is sometimes you can set the other one up. Obviously, I've only been on city council for a little less than two years, and my opponent has served, you know, certainly much longer than that. I have been a leader in this community, though, for over 30 years and participated in all different leadership roles throughout the community. As far as the initiatives that I've brought forward to the city council, there's only one, and that one is offering and encouraging and motioning for a lower-income fare or a bus fare for families or individuals with lower income. And I had, you know, the privilege of serving on the transit commission and, obviously, understanding and being a part of this community for as long as I was, I knew that there was a demand there, and I worked hard for that along with council member Mitchell, and we were able to get that pushed through and approved. The rest of my time, you know, for the last two years, is spent on offering compromise and trying to offer discussions, proposing amendments to the initiatives that are being brought before us, that what I consider to be personal initiatives and not really serving the best interest of our community. And one of those is the marijuana item, which was just brought up. And the idea now that an individual or two individuals walking down the street and one of them is smoking a joint, whether it's legalized for medicinal or recreational uses or not, it's still illegal to do in public. And so when one is walking down the street smoking a joint and the other one is smoking a beer and they're arrested for possession, the one smoking the joint is fined $1, the individual drinking the beer is fined $60.
This question was submitted by Terry Weld. We will ask Terry to respond first. Amid a council president's strong partisan loyalty failed to foster independent and free thinking when addressing the concerns of all citizens.
Again, getting back to the whole theme of my campaign and the nonpartisanship and why that's so important to me, again, encouraging the free thinking, encouraging the independence of our council members, discouraging the alliance, the building, the alliance building, you know, creating voting blocks and things that we're seeing around the country, which I don't think is, you know, appropriate for a community like Eau Claire. When our council was created, it was created with the idea of being nonpartisan. Today, the definition is still the same, it is nonpartisan. But our council is not nonpartisan, and we are spending a lot of time and energy and effort on initiatives that aren't, in my mind, representing the entire community, which is what our role is and what our responsibility is. And I want to make sure that we continue to work on that and remind ourselves that there are 70,000 people that live in our community, and they all have different wants and needs, and we need to meet them equally and responsibly. That pendulum swings, and we've seen it across the country, from left to right and from right to left, but it never stops in the middle. And that's truly where I feel our council should be at all times, balanced. And that's truly where I feel our council should be at all times, balanced and representative and conscious of all people in our community. I spend a lot of time, as I mentioned earlier, introducing compromise and trying to get my fellow council members to see that there is a middle ground, to see that there is somewhere that everyone can be served. We're involved in campaigning right now and it's getting difficult, obviously, and we're out there a lot, but one of the biggest concerns I have is when campaigners are out there, canvases are out there campaigning for four different people, and I'm not sure how one person can speak for four different people. To me, that sends a message that they are going to think the same and vote the same. And I think that as independent council members, we should just be one.
Andrew Wirthman.
Thank you, and first off, I have touched on my leadership style earlier in the conversation to say that as city council acting president, I've tried to help foster an open dialogue among all of our council members. We've said that all council members can bring their ideas to the table. We've also opened up public comment periods so that whether you're a Democrat or Republican or independent or no party at all, that you have the opportunity to come down and share with us. In my day job, I actually work probably 80% with Republicans, 20% with Democrats in Congress to build strength around our national parks, making sure that our national parks are seeing dedicated funding. 80% of my job is actually working across the aisle. And every single council member that I've ever served with on the city council votes in the partisan November elections. Keep that in mind. But that doesn't mean that we're going to check our values at the door. Doesn't mean we check our values at the door. And again, I'm going to go back to this idea that the issue that we really have in our community is not partisanship, it's the fact that we have folks in our community who are just making it. Are just able to get by. And what are we doing about that? How are we being bold about that? It's not about partisanship. And I think we've shown in our community time and again, and I will continue as a leader to make sure time and again that no matter what your party is, if you're willing to come to the table and solve the community's issues, we'll get it done.
Now, each candidate will be given up to two minutes for a closing statement. Terry Weld will go first.
Again, thank you, and thank you to the sponsors and to the chamber and for all the work that they've put into this and bringing all of you here with us this evening. I appreciate the opportunity. If you've ever run for public office, it is no easy task, but certainly a worthy task and something that I've learned to enjoy and look forward to as it continues. I'm excited to continue that life story that I spoke of in the beginning of our meeting and the new chapter as city council president is a big part of that. For me, it's going to include, you know, continuing to support, strengthen our neighborhoods and the associations and the business districts that really make a huge commitment to our community every single day, to continue our work on affordable housing and making sure that, again, we're conscious of all those and the needs that they have and never at any time leaving anyone behind. And as long as we can, continue to build on our public and private partnerships. They've been a big part of our success here in the city of Eau Claire. And certainly, all the good things that we've done and all the work that we've done can't be done with just tax dollars. We need and rely on them to be a big part of what goes on in our community. I think it's, again, important that we continue to be fiscally responsible, that we appreciate every dollar earned and that we maximize every dollar spent. And I will listen and learn and take my time during the budget process to make sure that everyone benefits from our decisions. I will continue to ensure safer streets, walkways for pedestrians, bicyclists and motorists, and in the end, making Eau Claire a premier walkable community. And I will continue to encourage economic development and working hard for a balanced community, offering more employment opportunities, higher wages, and a revitalized downtown. Thank you, and I look forward to your vote on April 2nd.
Andrew Wirthman.
Thank you, and once again, thank you to our sponsors and thank you for everyone being here this evening, and thank you as well to my council colleague, council member Weld. As you may know, I grew up in rural farming community and for years, we lived in real poverty. Family car, in fact, was so rusted out as a child that I often could see the road rushing by below our feet. And I would say that I'm fortunate because my community decided to invest in me, thanks to good public schools, to caring neighbors, and yes, even to public assistance. I had a chance to go to college and I had a chance to buy a home and serve in my community. I want to bring that opportunity and that focus to all of our children here in Eau Claire and all of our families. I'm proud that during our 10 years on city council, we, in fact, added over 3,000 new jobs. When I was elected, the unemployment rate was 8.8%. It's now down below 2.2. But we're also doing so much more than that. We funded two new library positions to help those most in need. We're removing dangerous lead pipes in our older neighborhoods. We're also helping to support the creation of new neighborhood associations. And we've committed our city to 100% clean energy by 2050. And we did all this while expanding our police department budget this year by $1 million and expanding our fire and EMS as well. But work still remains. Too many in our community are just making ends meet. Wages are not keeping pace with the rising cost in our community for a living. Housing is becoming increasingly scarce. If you believe, as I do, that our city needs an agenda that focuses on lifting up everyone, then I'd be honored to have your vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
We'd like to thank Valley Media Works, who is video recording the forum tonight. Check their website at valleymediaworks.org for a schedule of rebroadcast or to view it on demand. If you're a resident of Eau Claire, be sure to exercise your right to vote in the upcoming primary. Early voting will be open in the upcoming election. Early voting will be open March 18 through 29 for city of Eau Claire voters at the downtown Eau Claire Elections Office during regular business hours, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Due to renovations, the Elections Office is located through the alleyway behind 203 South Farwell Street. Election Day is Tuesday, April 2. Polls will be open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Go to myvote.wi.gov to find your polling question.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.